We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and welcome to this two, Hall of Road Establishing Court.
Chairman Clemmons.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Marchman.
Here.
Brother Tommy Graeys is going to do the dedication. Tommy, thank you so much for coming. And then Ben Harrison, the director of the airport, will be doing our pledge of allegiance. Thank both of you.
I know y'all didn't come for a church service tonight, but I asked Chairman Clemmons, and I want to thank him for this privilege and honor it is to be here tonight. And I asked him if we'd be out of order just to share a word of encouragement. And I'm thankful to live in Coleman, in Coleman County. I meet folks just about every day that have moved here from out of state with no relatives or anything, but they visited here and they liked it so much, they went back to their place of residency, loaded up their families and moved to Coleman. I just met a couple just last week and they moved here from Prattville to be near their daughter in Tennessee. They didn't want to go any further than Coleman. And so it's just a privilege to live here in Coleman. And you know, tonight, I know we have our problems and we have personal problems as well. And you might be here tonight and you might be going through something no one else in all this world knows anything about. But I'm thankful that we have a God who does. And the Bible tells us to trust in the Lord with all thine heart, lean on him to thine own understanding, and all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct thy paths. And you know, there was a pastor that asked his congregation to stand and give their favorite scripture and tell why it was their favorite scripture. And after a few in the congregation did this, there was a man toward the back that stood up and he said, "Preacher, I like it over there where it says, 'And it came to pass.'" And he just sat down and everyone looked at each other and the pastor was somewhat puzzled. He said, "Well, brother, would you just stand and tell us why that's so special?" He said, "You know, we have our problems, we have our valleys that we go through." But he said, "I've never found one place in God's Word where it says, 'And it came to stay.'" But he said, "It's chock full of places where it says, 'And it came to pass.'" It came to pass. May we go to the Lord in prayer. And our Father in Heaven, thank you, dear Lord, for your love tonight. Thank you for the love that you gave through your Son Jesus, that through a personal faith and trust in him, that we could have life and have it more abundantly, eternal life and everlasting life. Father, I thank you for this privilege personally to stand here tonight, this honor that you've given me. And Father, I pray that you bless each one who is present, each home that's represented. Father, I pray your blessings upon our elected officials and in this case, our commission tonight as well as others throughout our city and county. And Father, I pray that you would just be with them in a very special way, enlighten them, and Father, lead, guide, and direct all of us as we serve one another. Father, again, thank you for this time together tonight and bless in all that is done, even in this particular meeting. And we give you the glory and praise for all that you continue to do because we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, approved amendments of May 18th, 2021, media, June 1st, 2021, special media appropriations, spend tiers, personal actions, payroll requisitions, and approve all journal entries to be posted.
Make a motion to approve item three.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say what motion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? Number four, public comments and any other action.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to provide you with an update on the American Signal Mass Notification System that was voted on last month. There we go. We've done a reformat somewhat of the page that they provided to us. It's been cleaned up and spaced out a little bit better. Ms. Emily and Heath worked on a rewording of the disclaimer that starts at the beginning. So that has a little more strength to it. It's a little better worded than, a lot better worded than the stop thing that they gave us. But as you look down through there, people will be able to put in their phone numbers or email addresses, multiple phone numbers if they want to. They can choose where they want the alerts to come from. They won't, like weather alerts from us, any alerts from the county commission on anything that you need to get out to the public and the other departments in the county. They'll also be able to receive municipal alerts from all 12 of the municipalities in the county if those municipalities choose. It'll be totally up to them, but the option is out there for them. Anybody that receives alerts, unless they uncheck these 24/7 alerts, the thunderstorm warning, tornado warning, hazmat warning, or shelter in place warning, those will be automatic unless people go in and uncheck that. If they sign up simply by texting a number to this, those will be the only alerts they receive until they go in and do something else. They'll be able to choose if they want their alerts, any of the alerts that are listed on there, if they want them just during the day from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., or if they want them 24 hours a day, seven days a week. People will be able to choose the alerts they want, they will be able to choose the timing that they want to receive those alerts. They'll also be able to go in and change those alerts anytime they want. If they decide they don't want to get winter storm warnings or ice storm warnings, they can go in and take them off. It'll be entirely up to them. They will manage their own subscription to this service. The service will be free to all residents of Coleman County. So it will be a wonderful thing for our county to receive, another way to receive weather alerts. The weather alerts will actually be automatic. We will not be entering those into the system at all. Those will be automatic through computer and digital sources and they'll go right straight to your phone, just like they do to a weather radio now. But we feel like it's going to be a good thing for the county. You know, we appreciate the commission's support in this. We're looking at doing some in-house testing right after the first of July, probably the start of the first full week of July, and give the link to employees and elected officials and work some bugs out of it before it goes public for everybody, make sure we've got it like we want it before then. But again, this is going to be the Coleman County Mass Notification. If anybody's got a question, I'll be around afterwards.
We appreciate all the time and effort you put on this, and I truly believe this is going to really help our citizens of Coleman County.
Well, I appreciate the work he did. He helped with the formatting on the page and getting that cleaned up so that it's less confusing. Ms. Emily did the wording for the disclaimer, so it's been a team effort.
Right, thank you so much. Any other public comments or updates before we move on? Number five, we'll go ahead and move on to new business. A, Ratified City of Coleman Abatement for Good Island Brewery LLC, by Coleman City Economic Development Agency, in the amount of $39,690.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so our first abatement is with Good Island Brewery. They are actually increasing capacity there at their facility off John Cooper Drive. They're going to buy some new vans and some new storage equipment. They're also going to hire five new employees. This total investment is just short of $660,000. And like you said, the total abatement value would be just, would be $39,690. From this investment, we will create, over that same time period, $35,583 new dollars for our education system.
There's not new jobs.
There are five new jobs.
Five.
Five new jobs.
Average wage, $20 an hour.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion for a vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? B, Ratified City of Coleman Abatement for Aegis Fence Company by Coleman City Economic Development Agency, in the amount of $84,825.
Yes, sir. So this is for Aegis Fence Company. They are going to buy some new buildings and renovate some buildings here in Coleman. The total investment is $1,390,000. That will be going into their new facility and some new production equipment. They're actually producing their own fence product now, which is how they qualify our abatement. They are a manufacturer because they do produce their own fencing at this point. 15 to 20 new jobs. The abatement will save the company $84,825 and will create $74,785 for Coleman area services.
Make a motion to approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? C, Ratified City of Coleman Abatement for JU LORTY Incorporated by the Coleman City Economic Development Agency, in the amount of $23,200.
Yes, sir. So JU LORTY is also known as JELCO. They're also located on John Cooper Drive behind Good Island. But this is actually for, they have acquired Elk River and industrial Park Two, and they are going to invest in some new equipment. And this equipment will lead to 25 new jobs. The total investment that we receive in the community is $408,170. From that, they will save $23,400. But over that same time period, we will create a new $22,327 for our schools.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion for a vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. D, Proclamation, Alabama History College Cemetery.
I don't know if we haven't even come and they've said that. Did we want to wait for it again, simply to call him? Yeah.
E, recognition.
We probably need to.
Yeah, we got approved.
Make a motion to approve item D.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? E, recognition, Presidio Givens retiring after 17 years of service with Collins. Thank you so much for your service.
Congratulations.
Trace, I'll read this to you. It says, "Congratulations on your retirement by the blessings of good health, the joy of good friends, a loving family, and the contentment of job well done filling your life with happiness. Best wishes from all of your colleagues and friends at Coleman County Commission." And it's signed by Chairman Clemmons and Associate Commissioners Watson and Marchman.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion for a vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? L, Ratified Insolvent Areas Taxes and Litigations for 2020 and Uncollected Insolvents and Taxes and Litigations for Previous Years for Coleman County Revenue Office and Authorize Chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman, Barry from the Revenue Commissioners Office noted all that could be here tonight, they're all at a conference. This is something that has to be approved annually. It's the final accounting of taxes following the annual land tax sale.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? G, Resolution 2021-21 Consider TDA to Purchase Supplemental Easement for Install and Use Fiber Optics on Two Partial and Authorize Chairman to Sign Related Documents.
Mr. Chairman, this was a request from the Tennessee Valley Authority. They are running fiber through some of their properties that they have, to some of the towers and pumps that they have. And we have property that they already have an easement on, but they need an additional easement for this fiber. And it wouldn't change anything, there's already an easement there, this is just adding something to the addition.
This don't cross the road, does it? I looked at that drawing, I didn't think it was, I don't think this crosses the road.
This is only a piece of property that the county owns, so it's not over the road, it's on a piece of property.
Okay. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion for a vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? H, Resolution 2021-22 Make Speed Limit to 15 Miles Per Hour on County Road 13 Open Way.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is only for the section that is east of Eagle Road. I guess, Mr. Harold, narrow section of Broadway. Based upon inspection by our staff, if you recommend setting the speed limit to 15 miles per hour in this section of Broadway.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, thank you. Make a motion to approve item H.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? I, Resolution 2021-23 To Condemn Property for Aviation Easements for Flight Safety at the Coleman Regional Airport and Authorize Chairman to Sign.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, these are easements that are above property, so we do not need all the property, we just need a parcel above the property in the airspace on the approach to remove any of all structures inside the airspace.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion for a vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? J, Resolution 2021-24 CDVG Competitive Grant from Adecco Community's Development Block Grant Program to Reconstruct and Resurface County Road 18 and Authorize Chairman to Sign All Related Documents.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a CDVG grant, as you just mentioned, to, for giving me authorization to apply for a grant to repave and resurface County Road 18. What this, what we'll be doing is be applying for a $400,000 CDVG grant, and our match will be $300,000. I talked to the county engineer, Brian, about that. We're going to be using craft funds that we already have that we haven't used for our match. And unless you have questions, I'll.
Can you specify why County Road 18 is big? I think the citizens need to know that.
Okay, well, we, I took, from you all had some suggestions on some roads, and Brian, the county engineer, had some suggestions on some roads. So my staff and I, plus the person we use as our grant writer, we all got, got together on that, went and visited all those roads and narrowed it down to County Road 18 because this specific grant is, you get a lot more points when you apply for it if it's in a low to moderate income area. And that is why County Road 18, and plus, the condition of County Road 18 outweighed one of the other roads, which was closed, but he thought because of County Road 18's condition and where it was in that area, as it's classified as a low to moderate income area, that would be the reason, he thinks, as again, it's a competitive grant, let me state that, I forgot to put that out, the reason we would be a lot better off to get, ultimately win or, you know, get the grant.
Also, you know, it was truly an honor to get the $250,000 for the grant for County Road Four and Six. Can you go ahead and speak a little bit on how we.
Yeah, that's a separate grant that we, that we put in in November, right when I took over as the Director of Economic Development. And I got with all of you all, and that is the Rebuild Alabama Grant, and we put in for County Road Four and Six. And then that grant, you get, they look at economic impact and because of the ECM raceway being at the end of those roads, I believe that helped us. And plus, I would like to thank our local legislative delegation and you all. We, of course, approved that grant when we put it in, and then they really helped us out as well. But that will, of course, be money, we don't have, any of these grants, that grant, this grant, is money that will go along the way to repaving roads. And so us getting that grant, we'll be able to repave Four and Six, and I got with county engineer on that already. We, that was announced yesterday, we got, we had been awarded that.
And those are $250,000 each?
Yes, that's a $250,000 grant. This is up to $400,000. I got with Brian, and of course, we'll be applying for the 400, as it says in the resolution, and we would match with the three. And as I said, that's not taking away, none of the craft funds that we have, any road that we would be paving right now. We're not going to take away any money from any roads on your budget. That was leftover money from last year.
Part of that can be used, well, part of that can be in-kind services also, if that's not.
We did talk about that, Brian. The reason we went with the three cash, when we talked with our grant writer Terry, is because you have to say whether it's in-kind or cash, Brian felt, and I don't want to speak to you, Brian, you can chirp up here, is that when we put it down as cash, is that we have that money over there in case we have to contract out with one of the contractors you all have, have, you know, that would be a way to do that, in case the county didn't have to go do it, pave it. So Brian couldn't, that's more his area.
That wouldn't exhaust that fund, would it?
Again, there was about $300,000.
Okay, all right.
And it's just the length of that road and the extensive amount of work that we're going to have to do to rebuild that base.
Right, that's the reason I was asking about in-kind, because I know the bases are bad.
With the many roads we're looking at to resurface, you know, possibly next year even, that would free up our forces to remain on those roads, if we can go with using a contractor.
As Brian was saying too with John, is that though, that money, the state, the gas taxes, all just keeps, you know, rebuilding. So we're just using leftover money from last year. So it's not, like I said, not affecting anything we're doing now or in the future. That's leftover money. And like I said, I think you all have heard a lot about County Road 18, and I think it'd be really helpful in that area. And that's why I got with Brian, so I think that would be really, really good to get that one done. Like I said, it's not 100%, it's a competitive grant, but I think it would, it shows the county's willing to do their part with the money and with the condition of the road, I think that will help us.
It'd be great for that community.
Yep.
It'd be great. But hey, we thank you, Brad, for all the hard work you're doing. It's truly an honor to get to work with you, so thank you so much.
Much having other questions.
Appreciate you.
Be that thanks, you be that vote center, be that center, because that's our rare district.
Make a motion to approve item J.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? K, Public Hearing, Collins Operations for FYE 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion for a vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Carts is applying to Aldott for an administrative operations and capital grant through the Section 5311 in HERS Act combined application for federal assistance for our rural public transportation program for fiscal year 2022. These grants will provide financial assistance for public transportation service for the citizens of Coleman County. The carts normally provides over $80,000 per year for our residents. I'll go ahead and do the budget details and then I'll open the floor for questions. The budget for fiscal year 2022, operations is $1,630,800, which, $50,000 of that will be covered by the fares that we take in. Federal funding on that will be $1,580,800. Administrative budget is a total of $71,300. The federal side of that would be $561,040. The local match will be $140,260. Capital budget is $1,352,400. Federal part of that would be $1,217,160. The local match is $135,240. So that's a total budget of $3,684,500. Out of that, $3,359,000 is federal money. Only $275,500 is local, which is county commission. The capital will be replacing 14 buses in the year 2022. I'd like to open the floor at this time. Anybody at all have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I can motion for a vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? L, Resolution 2021-25 Authorizing Local Matched Funds for Carts FYE 2022 and Authorize Chairman to Sign Related Documents.
Make a motion to approve item L, that's, you've already.
Yes, I've already explained everything, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? N, Resolution 2021-26 Authorize the filing of 5311 grant application and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion for a vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? N, Resolution 2021-27 Authorize the filing of the Carts Act grant application and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
Yeah, that's HERS Act for Carts. Yep. Make a motion to approve item N.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? O, Authorize the chairman to sign monthly service plan, ADS security upgrade at the Coleman County Water Department shop, insulation $3,327.50 a monthly, $32.35.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion for a vote.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? P, Consider Low Bid and Award Contract Based on Recommendation from GMC Engineers to Wiregrass Construction Company, Incorporated Pendant FAA Grant Offer for the Coleman Regional Airport Runway.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is the, is the grant for the runway rehabilitation and rebuild project. So what we need to do is award the bid to Love Reader, which is Wiregrass, and accept it. Once we get that done, then we will get the, what the FAA calls the go letter, to move forward on the project.
Make a motion to approve item P.
Mr. Chairman, I can second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed? Thank you so much, Ben.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Q, Consider Approval of XF Plan for County Roads Associated with Rock the South Event?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to be here and for the consideration of this traffic plan. 2019 was a rough year as far as traffic, figuring it out with a brand-new site. We had some pretty bad lines that affected all the way to the interstate. So we were challenged after the event by the state and local traffic enforcement to fix those issues. This traffic plan that we presented to you addressed those concerns. Definitely creates more runway to line cars up, but it also brings people in in a much more efficient way. Another big concern was unexpected, was the amount of foot traffic. We were commingling with car traffic on 469. So this plan would limit the access down 469 and 436 at that main intersection to prevent the safety issues we had in 2019. So we appreciate the consideration of this plan. We feel it addressed a big chunk of our safety and traffic concerns from 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, are you okay?
I have a question. So what's the plan? I didn't...
On 469, we are looking to any of the residents down that road that are looking to park, to send the early traffic to them.
To others south of 436.
To 222 to 469. So at that 469 intersection, we're trying to get everybody settled before that peak rush hour that comes in later in the day. We will bring RVs down that road as well, because we have some onsite RV camping, but most of those are coming in on Thursday. We have buses to consider this year, that's a concern with the schools. This would hopefully settle all traffic on 469 that we're bringing in before school buses are sent down the roads. As far as the locals are concerned, every local resident will be sending a letter to have a forum to talk about how this will affect you. We'll give you access to get in and out of the area without any problems. You know, in 2019, everybody got the phone out, went to Waze, went to Google Maps, they put in that address, and everybody hit that intersection, and it became a major issue. Most of the parking is not at that intersection, it's around the site. So by restricting the access down that road and filling that parking up early will bring all of the traffic to the sites, like I believe your parking. So it'll force that traffic around to the land that people are actually parked.
Okay, so on Swatford or 436, you're closing it from?
The same location we did last year.
Okay.
436 over the overpass.
Okay.
All the way up to behind the stage, and then we're going to be bringing everybody in 222, 278, away of 436, and 421.
Okay.
So we'll be bringing them in from the outside versus right down the gut where the festival site is.
What's allowed across the bridge, 436?
Same thing that was allowed last year. That's emergency use only, that is, you know, small ATV. I know there's a lot of shuttling going on. I mean, I personally don't have any issues with it. We don't, it didn't interfere with us. So as long as local law enforcement, you know, sheriff's office, everybody's good. We have no problem with it.
And the walkway cage?
Yeah, we, I know we need to discuss the expense there. I'm not sure if we're going to have parking over there, but I know with anybody that's interested in it, we just need to have a separate meeting about that, because I know the state will require it.
Okay. And what's your name?
Nathan Anderson.
Nathan.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Was that it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure everybody was good with it. Okay. Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. R, Consider allowing the town of Berlin to participate in county's joint bid program.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the Berlin has apparently received some grants to resurface the road weeds, and would like to participate in our interface bids. I do recommend approval.
Make a motion, we approve item R.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. A, Consider amending budget for Air Forward for fiber optic cable and camera system in amount of $30,500.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and we have identified some holes that we need to fill up in our security system. A lot of it is the cameras. A lot of the expense also is in the fiber to get to the cameras. Some of those cameras are on old network cables, and some are actually on wireless cables. So to get a much better picture of what happens at the airport, we need a fiber system, and then this will also be additional cameras to the system. The $30,500 would be the county portion, that is not split 50/50. So the total price was around $61,000.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item M.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass.
Thank you.
T, Consider appointing chairman to the Coven County Tyrism Bureau.
Make a motion, we approve item T.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. U, Consider appointing Travis Crass to the Coven County Tyrism Bureau.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item C.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. V, Consider surplus of office equipment to be sold on Gov. Deals, all the items listed below.
Not here, is it?
I think you have, you know, something.
Yeah. Yeah, make a motion, we approve item V.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. W, Consider approval to purchase census drive to read system, to create transceiver box reading system, antenna, and laptop in amount of $14,138.90 from the Coven County Water Department, and authorize the chairman to sign related documents.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item W.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. X, Consider participation in the ACCA's investment Alabama County Program.
Mr. Chairman, based on discussion in the work session, I would like to request that we postpone this for further investigation, and if necessary, we can come back with a special call meeting.
Thank you, John.
So we're just...
Make a motion table?
Make a motion to postpone, yes, sir.
Okay, alright, alright. So this will be on the next agenda then?
Or whenever it, it can be renewed. In other words, if it's set for a special meeting, it can't be brought up?
That's, I said next agenda, so...
Oh, I thought you said missing, I apologize.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I make a motion that we take it off this agenda table. Is that, would that be the correct motion? Is that what you're asking for?
Commissioner, to table, it would have to be voted on to take off the table?
Right.
If we just postponed to, we could postpone to further investigate it and bring it back up at a future time without automatically moving it?
Right, right.
If y'all wanted to do that, that would just be a postponement.
Okay, so my motion would be that we postpone it, that's on your recommendation. Yeah, so I make a motion, we postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion, postpone.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Y, Consider change in employee's handbook regarding political action of county employees.
Mr. Chairman, there's a local law on the books that has been on the books quite some time, and it conflicts with state law. So I respectfully request that we update our handbook to reflect what the state law is.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve. I'm Y.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Z, Consider charging fees related to requests for public records.
Mr. Chairman, by statute, we can charge a fee for what it costs us to produce documents that are requested by citizens. And sometimes there are requests that take a lot of time and are very large in volume. As a result of that, I respect the request that you approve the charges that would be put in place for any future requests.
Make a motion, we approve item C.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Double A, Consider approval of $50,000 payment to the Coven County Cemetery Board for purchase of memory garden cemetery in accordance with criteria set out Alabama Code Section 45-22-30.
Mr. Chairman, this is a local law that was passed regarding purchase of a for-profit cemetery. The Coven County Cemetery Board has found a cemetery that is in need, and are looking to purchase it. And it's been unanimously approved and admitted. So therefore, I recommend that we go ahead and have that passed, so that's ready for them at the right time.
Do we know when that law was passed on that?
I've got a copy of it. See if you can throw it over there.
That's the one.
I think that's right.
I think that's the one.
It's been pending for a while.
March of 16th.
March of 16th.
Yep.
May, give them something.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
We ain't got much of a choice on that, though.
Any opposed, pass. V, V, Consider moving the work session to 4:00 p.m. starting July the 20th to 2020.
Make a motion, we approve item double B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. C, C, Consider Coven Regional Medical Center use of the sound parking lot of courthouse on June 17th through the 24th, July 1st through July the 8th, or July the 8th through the 15th, July the 22nd into 29th of 2021 from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., to offer free COVID vaccines to the community.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve. I like C.
Yeah, I don't mind using it, I just got a little confused on the dates, how they lined up.
Why not?
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I might, they can use it. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. D, D, Consider designating Dr. James Thomas office located at 1908 Cherokee Avenue Southwest, Coven, Alabama 35055, as a collection site for drug and alcohol testing.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I believe I can be brief on this. This is more a matter of do what you say you will do, ensuring that we're doing that in regard to our drug and alcohol policy, specifically Section Roman numeral 7 dash N Paper F14, it states that the Coven County Commission will designate a collection site in a reasonably accessible location, and we've all, we've been using, of course, Dr. Thompson's location ever since I've been here for many years. I just want to make sure that we are following our policy. The commission says that we'll designate a location, so that's my response, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item B.
I second, I vote yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. D, D, Approve 2015, 2016 water revenue warrant, refinance service 2021 warrant.
Mr. Chairman, we have Lee Burshaw, who's the bond attorney on this, on this deal, he's going to give us an update on the savings.
Yeah, y'all hit the market at a great time. John works, and the Water Department worked really quickly and diligently to get, get your bonds in the markets at just the right time, that the county and the Water Department are going to save a total of $330,000, which is going to be between $35,000 and $40,000 a year in cash flow to the Water Department. You got an A rating from S&amp;P, which was a real good indication of the operation, the management, and the overall quality of the system. So there's a lot of good news for the Water Department.
We truly appreciate that, because it's, you know, we want to make sure that we save our taxpayers as much money on water as we can. So can you tell us exactly how much they're going to save on this?
$330,000. And your, the interest rate, including all costs, is about 1.5%. So if you read the financial news right now, these rates are not going to be around much longer, so this was really a, the right stroke at the right time, and something to be proud of.
Maybe that'll hit with some rates.
Yeah.
You know, that's a big saving for our taxpayers, that's something to be thankful for, or so.
And it really takes, the administration, John, and the Water Department had to do a lot of work behind the scenes, and I know John will be glad not to see my name or email pop up in his office, so they deserve a lot of credit.
Well, I want to thank John, because he spent a lot of time on this.
Appreciate that, John. Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, pass. F, F, Proposal Plant, Oakview Subdivision, a minor subdivision containing five lots, located on County Road 1435 in District 3.
Mr. Chairman, based upon review by our staff, I do recommend approval of this preliminary plan.
I make a motion, we approve item double F.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. G, G, Propose a plant, Knodia Ridge, a major subdivision containing nine lots off of County Road 71 in District 2.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do recommend approval of this preliminary plan based upon a review by our staff as well.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. H, H, Propose a plant, Seteria Point, a minor subdivision containing eight lots located off of County Road 338 in District 2.
Mr. Chairman, based upon review by our staff, I recommend the approval of this preliminary plan as well.
You got subdivisions going in everywhere. What are we going to do, John? Without any subdivisions, Brian? Make a motion, we approve item double G. Excuse me, that's double H.
Double H.
Yeah, I'm one behind.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
I'm just now getting good on my alphabet, y'all bear with me.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. I, I, or L, L, Award Bid 1349, leads two new rubber tire excavators to Ward your tractor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do recommend the approval of this bid to Ward Dr.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Uh, second that motion on double I.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Double J, double J, We're seeing bid 1354, one U Road processor awarded to Ford M Iron LLC on June 1st, 2021. Consignment on inspection equipment did not pass inspection, award bid to Scott's Excavating and Hall Incorporated, the second lowest bid.
Mr. Chairman, I do recommend approval of this bid to the St. Will's Better.
I make a motion, we approve item JJ.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Double K, Award Bid Number 1350, Ron Care and Lightness at various county locations.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, we received one bid on this, and under the state bid law, when we receive one bid, we can reject and negotiate with that sole bidder. If the negotiations don't produce a reasonable amount, we could still redid later, at later times. So I would request that we have a motion to reject this bid and negotiate with the sole bidder.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item KK. We're rejecting this bid and doing some negotiations. Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve, item K, K, we're rejecting this bid and doing this negotiation.
I second, I vote yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass. Number six, the next commission work session is accused July the twentieth, twenty twenty-one at four P M. on commission meeting round. Number seven, the next commission meeting will be accused July twentieth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. at a commission meeting round. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
To adjourn.